Good evening. Welcome to our City Council meeting for December 10th. A little different tonight, it's a reorganization meeting. Would you please join us in pledging allegiance to our country?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please with a roll call? Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Mayor Protem Fox?
Here.
Mayor Bill de la Peña? Present. Thank you. All right. I would like to acknowledge former mayors and councilmembers present this evening. Would you please stand and be recognized? We have here Chuck Cohen, Ed Jones, Larry Horner, and I believe Mr. Ray Garcia is not here yet. Thank you very much for your past service to our community. And actually continued service to our community.
That's for sure.
Okay. We have other elected officials here this evening. We have here with us Ernie Villegas on behalf of Assemblyman Jeff Gorrell. Good evening. There you are. Thank you. Mary Lakin on behalf of Senator Fran Pavly. Thank you. Melanie Abbe on behalf of Congresswoman Julia Brownlee. And also Susan Holt, Chair of the Conejo Recreation and Park District. Along with other CRPD board members, we have George Lang here. And Chuck is here as well. And the mayor of Simi Valley is here, Bob Huber. Where are you? Thank you. Also would like to recognize various planning commissioners here tonight. Doug Nichols. There you are. Darrell Reynolds. Dan Roundtree. And Pete Terpel. And here is Mr. Ray Garcia. Good evening. We were just announcing your name. Glad you could make it. Also in our audience are representatives from various organizations. We have Jim Friedel. He is the CRPD General Manager. There you are. We also have here, is Chris Kimball here? President of CLU? Haven't seen him in spirit, okay? And none other than Jill Letterer, Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. Where are you? There you are. Thank you so much for being here this evening. I would also like to acknowledge any additional members of our city boards, commissions, and committees in attendance tonight. Would you all please stand? Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. If I've missed someone inadvertently, I do apologize. Anybody else here? Okay. All right. All right. Thank you all for attending. We appreciate it. Our next item on the agenda is special presentations. And the particular special presentation tonight is seat dedication. In 1984, City Council initiated the Council Seat Dedication Program to recognize citizens demonstrating outstanding community service. This evening, the City Council is pleased to honor three individuals for the 2013 Council Seat Dedication. The honorees are, first Jackie Pruner, and in memory of her late husband Donald Pruner. And second, we have here tonight, John Rutherford. First Jackie Pruner's son Mike Pruner will be assisting his mother by joining me at the podium. Jackie and Donald Pruner moved to Thousand Oaks in 1960, and after 46 years in the Conejo Valley, they moved to Camarillo in 2006. Jackie and Donald were married 48 years when Donald passed away in 2006 at the age of 69. They have one daughter, Michelle, and two sons, Mike and Scott, who all live here in the area. There are also nine grandchildren and five great-grandchildren bringing joy to the family. To quote former Councilmember Dennis Gillette, "The Prunners were the undisputed parents of emergency medical response resources in this community, plus introduced paramedics to Ventura County." "The Pruner Ambulance Company opened in 1963 and was instrumental in upgrading and standardizing the county's ambulance services. Don helped develop the State of California standards for emergency care and emergency medical technician training. Jackie worked side-by-side with Donald as they ran their company and made a wonderful team in both their personal and professional lives. By the time the Prunners sold their company in 1994, the company was serving Malibu, Calabasas, and all of Ventura County except Ojai and Oxnard." Jackie, we thank you and your late husband Donald for your many years of service and your contributions to our community, and it is an honor to personally acknowledge you this evening with a seat dedication, and that is seat number H14. I'm not sure, Mike, if you wanted to say a few words? Very good.
Mayor de la Peña and the City Council, I want to thank you very much. This is quite an honor. Having grown up in Thousand Oaks and having my parents been such a part of the community, I can't imagine living anywhere else. My mom has always been the woman behind the man, either pushing him towards something or holding him back from something. And today she is behind me, pushing me up here to do this for her, and I couldn't be more proud of my parents or the community that we live in. Thank you.
I'm sure some of the councilmembers would like to make some comments regarding this particular seat dedication.
Let me begin. Jackie and Don go way back, as the mayor pointed out, for emergency medical service. Having ridden rescue ambulances with the Los Angeles Fire Department for a number of years, I can tell you that bringing a paramedic program long before it was serviced by the firefighters of Ventura County was state-of-the-art. And as I was listening to the mayor's presentation, I was reminded about former mayor and councilmember Dennis Gillette, because as many know in the community, Dennis was one of the very first police officers as a sheriff's deputy here in Thousand Oaks. And what is not commonly known, Jackie I know knows this, but the deputies used to moonlight in driving the ambulance way back when. And so Dennis used to comment that after many late nights, long before he was married, he used to be actually using the oxygen while driving the ambulance down Thousand Oaks Boulevard. But Jackie and Don, really some of the early founders in our community, those of you that go to Los Robles Emergency Room, you will see a statue of Don appropriately placed in front of the ER for all his years and his leadership in emergency medicine. And so it's very fitting that both Jackie and Don are recognized with seats here at City Hall. Congratulations.
Congratulations again. Thank you for what you've done. All right, our next honoree is John Rutherford. Would you please join me at the podium? John and his wife Carolyn have been married for 43 years and raised three children in the Thousand Oaks area. John proudly boasts his children are successful graduates of the Conejo Valley Unified School District. Deanna, Christie, and Luke are all college graduates with successful careers. John and Carolyn have five grandchildren ranging in ages from six to 13 years old. Now, John was a longtime resident of the Conejo Valley until he retired in 2006. He was CEO of the Southeast Ventura County YMCA for 25 years. Under John's leadership, the YMCA grew from a one-branch facility on Moore Park Road on land donated by actor Joel McRae to a four-branch association consisting of the Conejo Y, Simi Valley Y, Triunfo Y, and Newberry Park Miller Family Y. John saw the association grow from only four children sites to 22 sites, and from about 4,000 people served in '81 to more than 22,000 people served when he retired. John is very humble and doesn't hesitate to recognize Thousand Oaks residents who gave their time and millions of dollars to sponsor families that couldn't afford the cost of programs, as well as build two YMCA facilities in Thousand Oaks. He also provides recognition back to the city for its contributions to the Miller Family YMCA in Newberry Park. John, we thank you for your many years of service and contributions to our community, and it is indeed an honor to personally acknowledge you this evening with a seat dedication, and it is seat number K21.
I remember coming up here and talking several times, asking for favors, and I was always nervous, and I'm just as nervous tonight. You know, this has been kind of a mixed blessing for me. I really feel embarrassed because all I did was hold on to the reins and watch this city develop the Y's, and because I know this city believes in those biblical principles that we try to instill in young people and families. And so I thank you very much, Mayor, and City Councilmembers for honoring me, but really on behalf of me, it's all the volunteers and even yourself for the great help you've done in helping this community. So thank you.
Would any councilmember would like to make a comment then? Mr. Adam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. John, I'm really glad you could be here this evening. John's the father of some great kids, but he's also the father of the YMCA here in Thousand Oaks. Without John, I don't know if it could ever have been started. He took a 35-acre gift from Joel McRae and pretty much built that YMCA from scratch. And John was the kind of guy that, he pitched right in. He was the first one there in the morning, helped all the volunteers. John's a do-it-yourselfer, so we had some good projects up there. Although I still wonder, John, why when you turn the lights on in the front of the Y, the neighbor's garage door goes up and down across the street? But that's probably part of the do-it-yourself conundrum there. But John always rolled up his sleeves and pitched in, and he was a real inspiration to me. And I had some health problems a while back, and I was on the board at the time, and I had to drop off, and I was feeling kind of down, and all of a sudden one morning, you know this, John, I got a call from John, and he said, "Al, you need to come back to the board. We need you." And that was a turning point for me. And I did come back to the board, and I appreciate you giving me that little kick in the rear to get me going again, John. I appreciate that. You really did a great job, and I know you believe in the kids in our town, you believe in volunteerism, and we really are grateful to all you did. Thank you, John.
I'll now turn it over to Mayor Protem Andy Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now is the time for presentations to Mayor Bill de la Peña, and we'll begin with the representative from Assemblymember Jeff Gorrell, Ernie Villegas. Following Mr. Villegas will be Marie Lakin on behalf of Senator Fran Pavly.
Ernie, good evening.
Well, good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and Mayor Bill de la Peña. It is an honor to be here for a couple of reasons. One, to represent our Assemblyman Jeff Gorrell. But the other one is a personal one, because as a former mayor and City Councilmember in Fillmore, I know the type of work and dedication it takes to be up there with all of you. And the City of Thousand Oaks really is blessed by having good leadership, good leadership with your councilmembers, with your staff, and your city manager. And I know how many hours it takes and dedication to serve, and public service is so important and vital in today's world. The role of the mayor is one of many hats, and I know how challenging that can be, but I also know how rewarding that is. So, Mayor, on behalf of Assemblyman Jeff Gorrell and the State Assembly, I'd like to present you with a certificate of recognition for your outstanding service as mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks. Representing the State Senate, Senator Fran Pavly is Marie Lakin. Following Mrs. Lakin will be Representative from Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, and that would be Melanie Abbe.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm just really excited to be here on behalf of Senator Fran Pavly, and she sends you her best wishes she couldn't be here tonight. Being mayor is a tough job. You juggle a lot of things, and you've done so with just exceptional grace this year, and we really, really appreciate your service. And not only have you done that, but you've juggled two twin boys too at the same time. So, well done, Claudia. So, on behalf of the Senator, I'd like to present this to you.
Next, we have Melanie Abbe from the Congressional District, Congressmember Julia Brownlee, and following her will be Susan Holt, Chair of the Recreation and Park District.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Protem and Mayor. It is my privilege to be here today to present, Mayor, with a certificate of congressional recognition in honor of your years of service, leadership, and dedication to the City of Thousand Oaks and your commitment to the civic priorities of this wonderful city and its people. Even though I just started with the Congresswoman, I've seen you at so many events, so I know the work that you put into this job, and it's been an honor to know you, and obviously you're not leaving, but it's going to be a privilege to work with you, and I wish you all the best for happy holidays and all the best for a wedding year you can bring. So, on behalf of Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, congratulations and thank you for your service.
Susan Holt, Chair of the Recreation and Park District, and following Mrs. Holt will be Jill Letterer and Adam Haberstock from the Chamber of Commerce.
I have quite a few of our board members here, so I'm going to ask them to come up too. And our General Manager, Jim Friedel, is behind me. Ed Jones, George Lang, Chuck Hofer, and we're all happy to be here. You're over there. Okay. That's okay. Anyway, congratulations on a good year. It's been productive, and it's been busy. I know it's been busy because we've run into each other very often, which has been a good time. So, we're very happy with everything that's happened this year. We're very proud of the collaboration between the Park District and the city, and we appreciate your mentioning that today at your State of the City address. So, as Jim told me to say, this is his line, "We're all on the same team." So, now, Mayor, we're going to start calling you Captain Claudia. We know that you're going to be involved in soccer. So, we will see you on our soccer field, and we've had the board members and staff members sign this soccer ball. And in addition, it might be chilly, so you might need some hot coffee. And then there's also something else you can just put under your tree. But congratulations, it's been a good year, and I've enjoyed our companionship too.
I've been a little recalcitrant. I've been trying to line up former mayors for my annual giving of the mug from former mayors, and it's on the way, so I'm sorry it's not here tonight.
Next, we have Jill Letterer, the CEO of the Chamber, and Adam Haberstock, who's the Chair of the Governmental and Economic Affairs.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, City Council, Thousand Oaks City Staff. I am thrilled to be here tonight. It's been a wonderful year for Mayor Bill de la Peña. We congratulate her. We have a number of members of the Chamber Board here as well. We've got Rick Lemo, Pete Terpel, a chair emeritus, Tom Cohen, and on behalf of Kristin Davis of Amgen, and it was very exciting to hear you announce the Amgen Tour of California this afternoon, and the 1,100 members of the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, we thank you so much for your partnership. Susan Holt said it well, we are all members of the same team, we are members of this premier city of Thousand Oaks, and we are so grateful for your service. So, I have a small token of our thanks in recognition of your outstanding service to the City of Thousand Oaks and the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. Claudia Bill de la Peña, Mayor, 2013.
We have two electeds who are here to make presentations. First, our neighbor from Simi Valley, Mayor Bob Huber, and following the mayor will be Supervisor Linda Parks. Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening. It's indeed a pleasure to be here again this year. I always enjoy coming to your reorganization meeting in your beautiful City Hall, and everybody's always so warm and greeting me. And if you'd indulge me for a moment, Mayor, there's some deja vu for me this evening. You know, our cities are really, really close, okay? And it reminded me tonight when you awarded these two sets of seats, because I've known the Pruner family for about 44 years, and Don for a number of years was in our Rotary Club in Simi Valley. So, congratulations to Jackie and her family. Well deserved. And in 1971, the only YMCA we had on this end of the county was the Southeast Ventura County YMCA. And the year I moved here in 1969, but in 1971, I was chair, well, it's called president, it's called chair now, but in 1971, I was President of the Board of the Southeast Ventura County YMCA, and I had the honor of personally accepting the deed from Joel McRae. And I just want to say congratulations to John Rutherford, because I do pay a lot of attention to YMCA. Both my boys and I went through wire and guides, and Jim Keen's my Planning Commissioner, who was one of your right-hand compadres there. And it just warms my heart that I had this deja vu feeling why we're so close in cities, because I've had a close relationship in these particular experiences. Leads me to why I really came tonight, because I didn't know you were going to be presenting to these two individuals, but I wanted to say that congratulations to them. Three years ago, we formed a group of the three city managers and the three mayors from this end of the county, Moore Park, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks, and we meet on an ad hoc basis. And the first year I came, I thanked Andy for his participation, and last year I came and thanked Jackie, and it means a lot to us, and we do have a lot of common ties on regional issues, and it's getting more critical that we pull closer together, just things that are happening with money and redevelopment laws, et cetera, et cetera. And Claudia, you've stepped up this year a lot on behalf of the east end of the county, and I'm here officially on behalf of the City Council to say thank you with this certificate of recognition. May it be known that this certificate of recognition has been presented to Claudia Bill de la Peña in appreciation for the partnership between our cities during your term as mayor. And this is on behalf of our entire City Council, thank you for your service, and thank you for Scott for his service. We really, really appreciate it, and we're very fond of your City Council, except you stole our city attorney. Congratulations, best wishes.
Ventura County Supervisor from the Second District, Linda Parks.
This is not your ordinary Point City. It comes with a scarf that matches a hat she has. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I just want to congratulate you on a really successful year as mayor. It is a lot of work, as most of you know out there, and the former mayors here, you just say yes. You keep saying yes to everything, and you end up going everywhere, and you get a great perspective of the community. And we are so enriched by your efforts, and so I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. We have a resolution with a sweet picture of your boys on it too, because Claudia not only exemplified a great role model to our youth, but also helped to show how you can actually balance both motherhood and your job, and she just did it remarkably. It's a lot of work, but she just did it so well. We also really appreciate her work in working with the business community, working with the Chamber of Commerce, working with the different cities and the state and the Congress, and also working with the Board of Supervisors. We just so much appreciate your collaborations that you instilled with your city, and then also the efforts that you did. We even got a ribbon cutting at Santa Rosa Park thanks to the City Council and your efforts too. And so, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, just want to congratulate you and thank you, really thank you. And as a citizen of Thousand Oaks, I want to thank you too for doing all the work that you do and for being there for all of us. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda.
coming to your reorganization meeting in your beautiful city hall, and everybody's always so warm and greeting me. And if you'd indulge me for a moment, Mayor, there's some deja vu for me this evening. You know, our cities are really, really close, okay? And it reminded me tonight when you awarded these two sets of seats, because I've known the Pruner family for about 44 years, and Don, for a number of years, was in our Rotary Club in Simi Valley. So, congratulations to Jackie and her family. Well deserved. And in 1971, the only YMCA we had on this end of the county was the Southeast Ventura County YMCA. And the year I moved here, 1969, but in 1971, I was Chair, well, it's called President, it's called Chair now, but in 1971, I was President of the Board of the Southeast Ventura County YMCA, and I had the honor of personally accepting the deed from Joel McCray. And just want to say congratulations to John Rutherford, because I do pay a lot of attention to YMCA. Both my boys and I went through YMCA guides, and Jim Keen's my Planning Commissioner, who was one of your right-hand compadres there. And it just warms my heart that I had this deja vu feeling why we're so close as cities, because I've had a close relationship in these particular experiences. Leads me to why I really came tonight, because I didn't know you were going to be presenting to these two individuals, but I wanted to say that congratulations to them. Three years ago, we formed a group of the three city managers and the three mayors from this end of the county, Moore Park, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks, and we meet on an ad hoc basis. And the first year I came and thanked Andy for his participation, and last year I came and thanked Jackie, and it means a lot to us. And we do have a lot of common ties on regional issues, and it's getting more critical that we pull closer together, just things that are happening with money and redevelopment laws, et cetera, et cetera. And Claudia, you've stepped up this year a lot on behalf of the east end of the county, and I'm here officially on behalf of the City Council to say thank you with this certificate of recognition. May it be known that this certificate of recognition has been presented to Claudia Bill de la Peña in appreciation for the partnership between our cities during your term as Mayor. And this is on behalf of our entire City Council, thank you for your service, and thank you for Scott for his service. We really, really appreciate it, and we're very fond of your City Council, except you stole our city attorney. Congratulations. Best wishes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Ventura County Supervisor from the Second District, Linda Parks.
This is not your ordinary point city. It comes with a scarf that matches a hat she has. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I just want to congratulate you on a really successful year as Mayor. It is a lot of work, as most of you know out there, and the former mayors here, you just say yes. You keep saying yes to everything, and you end up going everywhere, and you get a great perspective of the community. And we are so enriched by your efforts. And so, I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. We have a resolution with a sweet picture of your boys on it too, because Claudia not only exemplified a great role model to our youth, but also helped to show how you can actually balance both motherhood and your job. And she just did it remarkably. It's a lot of work, but she just did it so well. We also really appreciate her work in working with the business community, working with the Chamber of Commerce, working with the different cities and the state and the Congress, and also working with the Board of Supervisors. We just so much appreciate your collaborations that you instilled with your city, and then also the efforts that you did. We even got a ribbon cutting at Santa Rosa Park, thanks to the City Council and your efforts too. And so, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, just want to congratulate you and thank you, really thank you. And as a citizen of Thousand Oaks, I want to thank you too for doing all the work that you do and for being there for all of us. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda.
Next, we have a presentation from our City Manager, Scott Mitnick.
Okay, Councilmembers, Madam Mayor. Nice to say Madam Mayor. I'm speaking on behalf of the executive team, that's the group of department heads that help implement council direction, and the 550 employees of the city organization. For those of you who attended the State of the City address today, you heard the Mayor talk about the challenges that the city faced in 2013, and it was a tough year. You heard the Simi Valley's Mayor talk about some of the challenges that we had on the East County. So, there's a laundry list of stuff. Don't worry, I won't get into it, but it was a challenging year. I asked the Council and the Mayor, just think back one year ago at this time. There was a lot of uncertainty. You had a new council member, and you weren't sure how the new council member was going to fit in. And if you look at where you are today, things are really good in terms of the council dynamics. It's a great council, one of the most cohesive and collaborative councils in this county, and you should feel proud of that. And that happened on your watch, Mayor. You were the leader that helped bring that together. So, the council as a whole, you think back over the last year, the issues you had to deal with, you've really wrestled with some tough ones. You balanced the budget, you dealt with the labor contracts, and there was uncertainty there. Pension reform, you brought it to Thousand Oaks. Employees are going to pay their share, and that was something the new council member had campaigned on. The council worked collaboratively to do that, and it was a challenge with the organization to implement that. You did it. You did the campaign finance reform, you dealt with some difficult issues with water rates, sewer rates, solid waste agreements, those were tough. You worked your way through that. You're actually bringing a rate reduction on the residential side to the community. A number of land use issues you had to deal with. Some didn't turn out quite the way all the players would like, but you worked your way through them. Long laundry list. I just ask you, when you look back over the last year, your leadership mayor, just remember, it was a tough one. You got a lot done. You have a lot to be proud of. Being Mayor, as you heard from some of the other speakers, it's tough. It's very tough. It's a lot tougher than people think, isn't it? Because you're trying to be a good leader of the council, you're trying to work hard for the constituents, and you're trying to get along with the organization, but you're also trying to be a good spouse and a good mom. And you two guys probably missed your mom alive, right? It's tough. I know it's tough sitting up there, but we're almost done. So, and you want to be a good friend, and you want to be a good daughter too to your parents. So, it's tough to balance it all. It really is. It's a lot easier if you don't have children and all of that, but you did a great job, and can't say enough. We just want you to know, we know how hard it has been and how hard it truly is. So, you did a great job all the way around. I'm proud to be City Manager here, and I've enjoyed working with you, Claudia, over the last year. We meet weekly, and I've learned a lot, and you've helped make us better at doing our job. So, I appreciate that. So, I have a small token, a nice card from the department heads, and a little something for you and your husband on behalf of the executive team.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott. We're going to go a little out of order, and we're going to move to council comments regarding Mayor Bill de la Peña's year as Mayor, and I will begin with Councilmember Jackie Irwin. I'll just work my way down, guys.
It's always hard to follow Scott when he's been so verbose, but I'd like to say as a, as I've been on the council for nine years, and this was really one of our best years. We've gotten a lot accomplice and accomplished, and we really worked together. There were, you know, a lot of disagreements along the way, but I think everybody worked very hard at coming to consensus, and I don't know if any people happen to watch what we went through with campaign finance reform. And we really had a lot of back and forth, but nothing got personal. And I really have to credit the Mayor this year for kind of wanting to come and say, "We really need to do things differently in Thousand Oaks." And we were very cohesive. We had discussions, and we really got a lot done. So, congratulations. I also, you know, in the past, it's been very difficult for the Mayor with young children to go to all the different activities, and, boy, you should see the calendar. It was filled up with every day, once or twice a day, going someplace to support the residents of the city. So, I think really she needs to thank her husband, because he stepped forward, the busy doctor, as making sure that the boys were taken care of. So, really appreciate everything you did to have us function so well this year.
Thank you, Jackie. Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Andy. Claudia, you had a great year, a really fantastic year. I'm really, really proud of you. Ran our meetings fairly, met with our staff regularly, met with the residents, always gracious, always with great aplomb. Claudia did a lot during this year. I'll tell you a couple of things that she did that were kind of fun. I mean, she just gave the State of the City address, and there's probably 500 people there. It was televised live for the first time, so you're now a TV star. She did all kinds of things. Meals on Wheels to seniors she was delivering. She conducted the National Anthem at the New West Symphony, and I hear she did it quite well, although I don't know if Marcelo Lenninger's threatened yet, but I hear you kept time quite well. Learned Chinese to greet some of our Chinese citizens at the New Year's Eve, at their New Year's Eve celebrations, Civic Arts Plaza. Guest lectured second graders about civics, managed to squeeze that in. Worked with the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, looked at the tree at the promenade, ran that whole affair. Very merry, by the way, if you're a merry person. Countless ribbon cuttings, commendations. I mean, she was just everywhere. I couldn't keep up with her. I don't think any of us could. And I'll tell you, if Santa Claus came early, Claudia would be there with a commendation and a welcome to jolly old Saint Nick, really. But, you know, I know Claudia. Claudia's a dear friend of mine, and all through this, believe me, she never lose sight of how important the residents are in this city, and how important to her some of our more vulnerable residents are, our seniors, our lower-income folks, folks that need a little help, folks that need a little understanding. Claudia is there for them. Claudia is there for them, and that really impresses me. And I know that we can count on her to continue that. She cares for the people in the city. She believes in Thousand Oaks, and she just wants to do her part to make this a real special city to raise our kids in and be safe. And I really want to thank you, Claudia, for your wonderful job.
Thank you, Al. Councilmember Joel Price.
Thank you, sir. Claudia, I remember back to a day where you and I got together for a little coffee there, and I think my words to you were, I don't know how you do it, with twins. And you said it, or somebody said it earlier, the letters B-D-L-P, and I have to make sure I put them in the right order here, were present on the council calendar continuously. You would always see B-D-L-P. I also remember one meeting that you and I attended with some folks from the United States Postal Service, and you had said yes to that too. A note to you at the time was that you have to have your children with you. Thankfully, that meeting was held at a library, and I think those of you who are present at the State of the City address today know just how fond her children are of the library. So, not a problem at all. They came back with 30 books each. Very good. I want to thank you for your leadership over this past year. You've done a wonderful job in bringing us all together, and as has been said, worked through a number of difficult issues, but very successfully. And it was not always easy, but we got there, and that's a testament to your leadership there. And I look forward to working with you in the future, and congratulations on a very successful year.
Thank you, Joel. Let me round out the comments from the council. First, I mentioned to Claudia today after the State of the City address that we really had a great year collectively, and much of that goes to the leadership of the council, which rightly sits with the mayor. It's my sense that I think many in Thousand Oaks a year ago were watching to see how council would reorganize and how council would conduct itself over the course of the past year. And it's my view, and I think most in Thousand Oaks would agree, that we acquitted ourselves very nicely. In what I'm entering, my 20th year in the council beginning next year, I have never seen the council function as well professionally, civilly, making difficult decisions. All of us act independently, but I think all of us look forward to coming to our meetings on Tuesday night. Claudia and I sat on COSCA together, and we had coffee some time ago, and I was mentioning to her that council now is like going to COSCA, which for those of you that, it usually takes about 30 minutes. We deal with open space, but there's no drama at COSCA. And council's very much like that now. Our agenda's a little more robust, but the sense, the attitude is, it's more lighthearted as we come to do the business of the folks. And that, in large measure, goes to how Claudia has handled the meetings, both here publicly and individually as council members. And I also want to recognize, I know it's been mentioned, the tremendous sacrifice that each and every person that serves as Mayor puts in relative to the commitment and the sacrifice to their family. Yes, we all run for office. Yes, we work hard to get elected. In Claudia's case, she's been at this coming up on 12 years. But there are two twin boys there, and their husbands sitting in the front row, Luca and Dante, and they're very active young men. And their mom has gone a lot. And while we run for office, we volunteer to do it, it's not lost on the four of us, the tremendous time and effort that Claudia has put in for the past year. She has been virtually everywhere. So, Claudia, while in no measure will this do any justice, it's really my pleasure and honor to present to you this tile on behalf of the city, on behalf of your colleagues in the City of Thousand Oaks, for really an outstanding term as Mayor. Nice job.
Beautiful tile. Looks a little bit bigger than my last one. Are they getting bigger, those tiles, over the years?
Thank you so much. I think it is my turn to make a few comments about my colleagues. And before we go to public comments, but I don't want to repeat everything that has been said, but what I will say is that, and as I mentioned in my State of the City address earlier today, it's not really up to one individual among us. It takes the entire council, all of the council members, to want to participate in collaboration as well as in partnership, because otherwise, we will get very few things accomplished. In this past year, in these past 12 months, we have accomplished so much, and we did so because of the fact that we all somehow, in our own way, let bygones be bygones and work toward the good of our community, and it has been very, very productive. I am so appreciative of each and every council member, from Andy Fox, Jackie Irwin, Joel Price, and Al Adam, for having made this year such a very good year. But, all of the hard work could not have been accomplished without the hard work of city staff under the leadership of our City Manager, Scott Mitnick, and Assistant City Manager, Drew Powers. We've had really wonderful, wonderful employees carrying out the plans and the vision of the council. And I do want to say, I have to mention Ellen Rosa for answering my emails on weekends and after hours in the evenings. And Scott tends to do that every now and then, but Ellen Rosa, she did it all the time. So, I just wanted to give her credit for that. And I just want to also thank, oh, gosh, my husband, you know? As Mr. Fox said, you can't do this, whether it be a council member or a mayor, without the support at home. You have to have somebody there that is willing to step up and take care of the little ones. And I've had my mother help me out, and my sister as well. And I know Jackie knows firsthand, having three children of her own, how challenging it can be. And I consider myself lucky that I have relatives who live in town or near us that are able to help you. I wouldn't be able, I can't imagine those who don't have any grandma or grandpa helping out. Also, I, yes, I did a lot of events today. This year, I try to participate in as many activities as possible. But frankly, had I not retired from CBS almost two years ago, this would have been impossible to do, simply impossible. But the fact that I decided to become a full-time mom to my two wonderful boys, Luca and Dante, gave me the opportunity to be more engaged in the community and to have a lot more flexibility. But I have to say, it was easier working at CBS. It is so true. So, being a full-time mom has been the hardest job. It really has been. After a career, 25 years in the broadcasting industry, being a full-time mom, oh, my gosh, that is a whole different world. And I only have two children, so I can't imagine how others do it who have more. Mr. Fox, right? So, thank you all very much. I have to thank everybody in our community with whom I interacted over the last year, and that is everybody from the Chamber, to the arts community, the Alliance, to the mobile home park residents, to the employees, to everybody that I interacted with this year. It's been fantastic. Thank you so much for being so appreciative and for helping us, the council, create a better community and keeping us on our toes, because you are our boss, and we try to listen to you as much as we can. So, thank you very, very much, and I thank all of my colleagues here on the dais for, really, for what has been a very productive year. Thank you.
Now, time to open the public comments. Madam Clerk?
This is the time and place for public comments. The speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or in a subject within the city's jurisdiction. We have 10 people who have presented cards and pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you. And our first speaker is Rick Lemo, followed by Kathy Goodspeed and Dave Grimm.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and city staff. I'm speaking under public comments tonight because this is one of the few times in my schedule where I'm not representing anybody else, but representing the one position I enjoy the most, and that's being a citizen of Thousand Oaks. As a citizen of Thousand Oaks, I am deeply involved in many things, and I ran into our mayor at everything I'm involved in and everything everybody else is involved in. And I want to thank you for being so involved and so active and so up to speed. I'll tell you a little bit more in a minute, but we were even able to con the mayor into helping us with something else next year. I really want to thank you all for your leadership, but especially the mayor for helping to guide our council where we no longer have my side and their side. But unlike many cities are unable to do, and God knows our Congress is not able to do, we only have one side, and it's our side. And I think that's wonderful for our city. I do want to disagree with the mayor on one point. She said she was at as many events as possible. I think you were at so many events, it seemed impossible. And I appreciate that, because I think it's good for everybody in our city to be in touch with our mayor. I think that's important. And last but not least, and I'll also tie this to a commercial, I really appreciate you being so open to new ideas and new challenges, and I'm giving you two little commercials tonight. One is One is April 14th, and not only has the mayor been, I'm sorry, February 14th, not only has the mayor been working with us, but so has her husband, Dr. Ron. She is on our executive team for the Heart Association, where we are, Go Red for Women event is on February 14th. And she has graciously agreed to be our 2015 co-chair for the event. And so thank you again very much for your involvement. We really appreciate it, and congratulations. And now you get to relax and only be a full-time mom. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Goodspeed, followed by Dave Grimm and Alyssa Leone.
Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff, honored guests. A few weeks ago, we had a tragic fire at the Ranch Mobile Home Park. One of our residents' homes was completely destroyed, and she lost two beloved dogs. After finding out the fire started as the result of not having a GFI outlet in her bathroom, some of us decided that this could be a terrible safety issue, not only for just one person, but for all of us. So there are 38 out of 63 homes which did not have GFI installed. I emailed Carolyn Milton to see if there might be some early funding available from the city block grant. Due to some restrictions in federal red tape, I was told money would not be available. The local LDS church had found out about our need, and through a resident at the park, offered licensed electricians to install the outlets for us. But we still had people who could not afford to buy them or to buy the units. Last week, I received a call from Carolyn Milton saying she had some good news. People at the city were aware of our needs and concerned about what to do. Scott Mitnick said he would make a call to see if he could find help. He did. And Alex Russell from Many Mansions stepped forward and said they would write a check to Senior Alliance for Empowerment for the cost of the GFI units. This is a true story of the community coming together. We at the ranch feel truly blessed at the concern and outreach for what's happening at the park. Thank you also to Mayor De La Peña and Al Adams for visiting us. We thank all the people involved and wish them a merry quest at Christmas and a blessed 2014. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Glad it worked out. Alyssa Leone, Andrea Gallagher, and Steve Gibbord.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager and staff. My name is Dave Grimm. I'm the chairperson for the Council on Aging. On behalf of my fellow commissioners and all the seniors who work for our Senior Adult Master Plan and those that benefit from our work, I congratulate Mayor De La Peña for her service to our community over the past year. Moreover, I thank the mayor for participating in council aging, Council on Aging events throughout the year. Council on Aging looks forward to working with our next mayor and all the city council as we recognize your experience and support through the past years. The challenges in providing for the senior community are not diminishing, and we intend to continue to being the resource for our mayor and city council when questions arise about the well-being of our senior community. Our rising senior population requires Council on Aging to initiate efforts to help the city at large understand the seriousness of the senior community. Council on Aging and the Senior Adult Master Plan would not exist without your greater vision to create a community that intends to the interests of every age group. The fact that we are able to continue our mission to serve the seniors year after year speaks volumes about the type of complete community our city council strives to attain. As always, we will support the mayor and the city council in the continued improvement of the quality of life for seniors and our overall community. Have a wonderful holiday season and a very successful year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Alyssa Leone, followed by Andrea Gallagher and Steve Gibbony, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager and staff. I'm Alyssa Leone, the chair of the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission, and I'm so happy that I could be here tonight for this very exciting transitional process. I speak for all of my fellow commissioners and the youth of Thousand Oaks when I say thank you very much to Mayor Claudia Bill de La Peña for doing such a fabulous job this year and for supporting our youth in so many ways. I'm sure everyone really appreciates your efforts, and I know I do very much. The Youth Commission's efforts would mean nothing without your support. You've made such a wonderful impact on our community, and we couldn't be happier to follow in your footsteps and try our best to make a difference as a commission. We hope to accomplish that this year through our Youth Leadership Summit, Youth Implementation, Drug Alcohol, Environmental and Recreation Teams, our new internship program, and many other events and partnerships. We're very excited to move forward and work alongside city council this year to make positive changes. I am optimistic that this year will be wonderful for our commission and for our city, as well as for all of you. Thank you again, Mayor Bill de La Peña, city council and staff for all that you've done this year. I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Andrea Gallagher, followed by Steve Gibbony and Vic Abruzzo.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager and staff. I'm Andrea Gallagher, President of Senior Concerns. On behalf of our board members, staff, our 500 volunteers, and most importantly, the thousands in the community we serve, we'd like to congratulate Mayor Bill de La Peña for her wonderful support of both caregivers and seniors in our community. I'd especially like to thank the mayor for taking part in the National Mayors for Meals program this year. Senior Concerns looks forward to working with the new mayor, city council, city staff, and particularly the Council on Aging in many of our programs, including Meals on Wheels, Senior Advocacy, our Caregiver Support Center, and Boomer Boot Camp. Your commitment to the Council on Aging, the Senior Adult Master Plan, and Senior Concerns is a true testament to your support of what is 40% of the City of Thousand Oaks population. So I'd like to simply say, Mayor, you rock.
Steve Gibbony, followed by Vic Abruzzo and, oh, okay.
Good evening, Steve Gibbony from Newbury Park. We do live in a great city. That's true. But unfortunately, we have a giant banker-run entity that is about to swallow us up. I'd like to show you a document. Please show that on screen. I don't know if you remember, about a year ago, I came in here and I told you guys that they were going to come for your pensions. LA Times article, Detroit Ruling Opens Door to Pension Cuts Across the Nation. A Bankruptcy Judge Ruling That Detroit's Pension Funds, Like Its Other Creditors Can Take a Hit Might Lead to Financially Troubled Cities Down the Same Path. Financially troubled cities in California, Illinois, Pennsylvania will soon face decisions on what to do with chronically underfunded pension funds, and experts say the Detroit ruling has made it easier for cities to argue that pensions be cut. I've told you before what's going to happen, and it's happening in many different ways. I've got a question for everybody here, and I'll try to keep it light, because I know we have some family members here. But why was Adolf Hitler not stopped from doing what he was going to do? That's because the media was state-run. He ran the media, and he also wrote in Mein Kampf what he was going to do before he did it, and nobody listened. Humans have a tendency to not want to see the bad that's happening. It's happening here. And I'll tell you how it's happening here. I've showed you documents that have said what they're going to do to us. The NDAA, which is indefinite detention for any American citizen, can be thrown into a hole without due process. That is law. I've told you that. I've also told you that the Internet resettlement operations document has been written. That is the FEMA camp. It says right in the document, they're going to re-educate you. They've put it all out there for you to see. I would love to live in this city nice and peacefully, but unfortunately, the monster is coming after us. It is a banker-run entity. It is not elected anymore. The Obamacare death panels they're now admitting are in Obamacare. Agenda 21, which is just basically about putting you under control, they're going to jam everybody into major cities, out of the rural areas, so you can be controlled, you can be hit with the microwaves, you can look into it, weather weapons, microwaves. How they're going to do it? They're going to do it by here. Document, please. A false flag operation. That is how Mr. Hitler got into power. He pulled a false flag. He burned his own parliament building, the Reichstag. He burned it down to the ground, and he blamed it on an enemy. What are they going to do in this country? They're going to blow something up, and they're going to blame it on constitutionalists, people who just want to get back to practical, reasonable constitution. Also, Echelon Spy Network Revealed. In '99, the whole NSA program was revealed on BBC.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbony. Next speaker is Vic Abruzzo, followed by Luca de La Peña.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations. I'm afraid I was here today simply to thank you again for what was done on behalf of the Ranch Mobile Home Park folks, those ground fault interrupters, and the ability to make those people and the rest of the community safe. I thank you kindly and hope you'll have as warm a holiday as they will, knowing you're a little bit safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Vic. I have here Luca de La Peña, unknown to me, followed by Noel van der Zandt and Clint Matkovic.
My name is Luca de La Peña of Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village. Madam Mayor and Council, I want to congratulate our mayor for having a great year as mayor. You've been a great mayor to all, and hope Andy Fox enjoys being mayor. Happy holidays and hope we have a great year, everyone.
Thank you. Noelle van der Zandt, followed by Clint Matkovic. Joe, I apologize, Joe.
Thank you. Al Adam is an old friend of mine, and he asked me to come here tonight to say a few kind words about John Rutherford, and we've heard many already. I just want to make one comment about the council. I've been here for 32 years. I've been watching the council. John has invited me down to speak on behalf of the YMCA several times, and generally was treated well, but there's one little guy over there that always went like this to me when I was speaking, or trying to hurry me along. I will hurry along. The atmosphere of this council is so far different, and I've seen it over the many, many years I've lived here, that I'm really pleased and very happy to see it. Now, about my friend John Rutherford. As was said before, he accomplished many great things. The mayor pointed out the growth in the YMCA, how additional Y's were built. And John did that not all by himself, obviously. He was an amazing person for recruiting members, builders, developers. The Miller family, for example, were the ones who built, developed the Dos Vientos area, and they donated an enormous amount of money to building that YMCA too, and that was wonderful. That's an example of what John has done. He's recruited people like that who make significant donations to Y and the development of the YMCA's buildings. And obviously, a lot of that has helped the communities that all of you are serving. I did want to tell you, in addition to the people he's recruited, he's done a great job of managing his volunteers. And sometimes he's very subtle about it. I met John early. We arrived here just a couple of months apart, and my wife insisted that I go to the YMCA and sign up my daughter and myself for a father-daughter program, since I had put my sons through it, and we didn't want to discriminate against our daughter. Fortunately for me, John was in the first group that I got involved with there, and that led to a 30-year friendship. Just as a personal thing, I want to tell you one thing that John and I did. We were at a YMCA campout, and he said to me, you know, Joel, I know you're a golfer. How would you like to work on a committee to have a YMCA fundraising golf tournament? And I said, well, yeah, but I don't want to do it all by myself. And he says, oh, no, no, I've already recruited this guy, John Black, I think that was his name, and he's going to be the chairman of that committee for the golf tournament. John Black left town after our first meeting. He's moved his family to somewhere in Texas. So I became the chairman, and I said to John, this is a tough job. Will you help me recruit some people? And he did. And we had our first tournament, and it went well. And afterwards, John said to me, Joel, would you mind continuing with that and also staying on the board of directors and helping with all that? And I said, John, I'll be happy to do that. I will do all of that as long as you are here. But the moment you leave the YMCA, I'm gone too. And I agreed to that, and when I formed that little contract, informal contract, I thought, these directors only seem to last about two or three years, so this is going to be easy. I won't have to work very hard. The darn guy lasted for 25 years before I would retire. So therefore, I ran that golf tournament for all of those years, and it was somewhat successful, and also stayed on the board and enjoyed watching him work and how the board itself worked. Thank you, John, for the opportunities and for finally retiring, and thank you all for the job you're doing.
And our final speaker is Clint Matkovic.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My remarks tonight consist of some constructive criticism, so I hope that we keep the boos to a minimum. Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff, Mr. and Mrs. Horner, Mr. Garcia, members of the CRPD Board of Directors, ladies and gentlemen. It is with great pride and honor that I rise tonight as a 32-year-old lifetime resident of Thousand Oaks on the eve of our city's 50th anniversary. Thousand Oaks means a great deal of many things to many people, but to me, it has and will always mean home. Being born and raised in Thousand Oaks has given me not only a sense of pride and honor, but also a sense of responsibility for our community and its future. That is why 17 years ago, at the age of 15, I began my involvement in local government. Since then, I have been a representative from Thousand Oaks on the Ventura County Air Pollution Advisory Committee, and one year ago was a candidate for the Cano Recreation and Park District Board of Directors. I speak tonight as a representative of my generation in hopes of directing attention not only to the past 50 years, but to the next 50 years. Leadership on all levels of local government will continue to experience challenges, but we will overcome these challenges together. The city council must continue to respect those in the community who might disagree with its perspective and its policies. We will need to address the challenges of providing affordable housing for our senior citizens in our community. citizens in our community. Our seniors in our community are our teachers and deserve our respect and our assistance to ensure that they experience the best quality of life possible, and I'm sure there's nobody in these chambers that would disagree with me on that statement. Our park district will also face challenges. We enjoy many areas of parks and open space, but I must raise concern regarding a 30-plus-acre wetland off of Borcher Road in Newbury Park, which no CRPD official, no city official or no COSCA official has publicly stated a position one way or another. We need to protect this wetland, and it's an issue that is not going to go away until we address it. In the final analysis, Thousand Oaks is what we all will make of it. The business of government is the business of the people. Let us never take anything for granted as we move on into the future, and let us all remain involved as citizens. For as President Kennedy once said, "One person can make a difference, and everyone should try." Let us all try together. I thank you.
Thank you, Clint. That wetland area is an ongoing challenge that we will have to solve. All right. Now is the time for the 2013 council reorganization. And I'm asked to call for speakers, if there are any. But there aren't any. Okay. So will the city clerk please open nominations?
Nominations are now in order and open for the office of mayor for the city of Thousand
Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You know, it's really a distinct privilege and an honor for me to nominate a gentleman who has spent almost two decades of his life in public service to this community. Started on the planning commission where I used to watch him. Impressed me then. Been on the council now for many years. His experience and the perspective that he has brought to this council is absolutely invaluable, let me tell you. He's our senior council member, and I can't think of anybody who deserves more and who would do a better job than leading this city in our 50th anniversary year in 2014. That's my colleague, Mayor Pro Tem, Andy Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. And Councilmember Andy Fox has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? No, there being no further nominations for mayor. The nominations are declared closed. All right. And as I take notes here, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, Andy Fox, has been nominated to serve as mayor until December 2014. So please vote.
Mayor Fox, are you going to vote? Motion carries 5-0.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you, sir. I recognize that the role of leadership is a very important one, anywhere, not just here in the city of Thousand Oaks, but the role of mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. You are the voice of the city, sometimes the face of the city, and it requires somebody who has gained the trust of the public. As we've just seen here, with what I heard referred to as the elder statesman earlier this afternoon, you have ascended to the position of mayor, and that is because you have served for nearly 20 years on this council, and you have gained the trust and support of the residents here. I think that it is important that we fill the second chair, Mayor Pro Tem, with somebody who is equally as qualified. I know that just a year ago, there was a bit of debate about how this process worked, and there were some who assumed that perhaps I would have been last year's Mayor Pro Tem. But I haven't earned that trust yet from the residents. I hope to spend the next year continuing to do that. And having said that, I would like to nominate somebody who has earned that trust, and that would be my colleague, Al Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Councilmember Al Adam has been nominated for Mayor Pro Tem. You can applaud for that, absolutely. Councilmember Al Adam has been nominated for the position of Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. Please vote for Councilmember Adam for Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion carries 5-0.
First, Luca, great job. Great job. Give that kid a hand. Let me begin by thanking the council for, this is now my fifth opportunity to serve the city in the position of mayor, and I look forward to it with enthusiasm and pride as we enter into 2014, which will be the city's 50th anniversary. During today's State of the City address, I was thinking about some comments that I may make tonight, and I think what occurred to me was a sign that was on the desk in the Oval Office of former President Ronald Reagan. In fact, this was presented as a gift to me and was on my desk at the Fire Department. And the sign said, "There's no limit to what a man can accomplish if he's not concerned about who gets the credit." And as we enter into our 50th anniversary, and to keep in the spirit of what we've accomplished this past year, I'd like the council to consider maybe a slight variation of that, in that there's no limit to what we can accomplish if we're not concerned about who gets the credit. We have many things to look forward to over the next year. It is our 50th anniversary. It will be marked by a number of acknowledgements, a number of things that we are going to do to celebrate 50 years as a city. It will also be marked, not just by parties and celebration, but some real work. Councilmember Bill De La Penia and I have been talking for the last couple of months about where are we going over the next 50 years. So tonight, I'm pleased to announce on behalf of the council that shortly after the first of the year, we will be embarking on a goal-setting process, but we are looking at a project that the citizens and the residents and the council members will actively take part in, and it will be known as Thousand Oaks 2064, which will be 50 years from 2014. And what are we going to do as a community? What are our plans for the next 50 years? Council will actively look at that at our goal session, and we see that as a collaborative process between our community, the council, city staff, in constructing a roadmap, if you will, over where we're going for the next 50 years. And so we're very excited about that, and we look forward to doing that. As we enter into the next year, I look forward to working with our outstanding city staff, and I do have to acknowledge the great leadership that we are very pleased to have in our city manager, Scott Mitnick, and our city attorney, Tracy Noonan. Let's give them a hand. They do a great job. Finally, I just want to conclude my comments on a personal note. My wife, Latisha, is here, and as we've heard, being mayor is a true sacrifice. Like Councilmember Bill De La Penia, we have a very active household with teenage youngsters and college kids coming back and forth, and so Latisha just thanks in advance for what I know is about to happen. Anyway, I just want to just thank the council again, thank the community again. It is truly an honor to serve. That's why I've done it for so many years. I've always said that up here, you're just renting a seat, and the citizens of Thousand Oaks every four years get to decide if they're going to renew your lease. And so, thanks again, thanks to the council. And with that, I'll turn it over to our new Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Adam.
Well, thank you, Mayor Fox, and I think it's very wise to give a preemptive thank you to Latisha. Good move on your part. And I congratulate you on being our mayor. I'm really looking forward to working with you. I think we're going to have a fantastic year. And Councilmember Price, thank you for nominating me, and you have earned the trust of this council, sir. And I mean that. And you have earned the trust of the community as well. You're out there, you're participating. You're a fine man, and I'm proud to sit next to you. All I'll say is that I had a great first year. This was my first year on the council, and I learned a lot, and I want to keep going. It's great working with these fine people, with the staff. They're great people. And, you know, this is important work. It's important work, and I'm just really privileged to be a part of it. I really am. We affect a lot of lives, and I get to be part of that, and I'm very thankful to all of you for that. And I think a lot of you have sensed that there is, in fact, a new dynamic on this council. There is a new dynamic, and that's inevitable. We have two new people, Joel and myself, and so there will be a new dynamic, and it's a good dynamic. It's a good dynamic. It's a good blend of the new and the old. I was going to say the old. Not chronologically, but our long-serving council members, Jackie Urm, Claudia, Bill De La Penia, and Andy Fox. It's really working well. You know, I think all of us feel that when it comes to an issue, we want to vote for or against that issue. We're going to differ here and there, and that's fine. That's the way it works. But we want to vote for or against the issue, not the person. Not the person, because that's how we do the best work we can for the citizens of Thousand Oaks, we put principles before personalities. And I'm going to carry that into 2014. I'm going to assist Andy any way I can. You just call on me, I'll be there, and we're going to have a great year in 2014. Thank you.
Thank you, Al, congratulations. Comments from the council, and we'll start with Claudia on the hand.
We're not going in order of age, are we?
No.
All right. All right. Well, first of all, congratulations, Andy, to you and your fifth term as mayor. It will indeed be a very exciting year, the city's 50th anniversary, and as Mayor Fox mentioned, it will be a year filled with activities. And these will be activities that will require direct feedback and input from the residents, first and foremost. And congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem, Al Adam. You need to give a preemptive thank you to your wife, Marilyn, as well. You'll be probably a little bit busier, and your children, your twin girls as well. And they may be able to see you a little bit less now that you're Mayor Pro Tem, but hopefully, it won't be too bad. So congratulations to the two of you, and I also wanted to recognize our city attorney, whom I did not mention earlier this evening, Tracy Noonan, who has been doing a very, very good job as our new city attorney. So thank you, Tracy. But overall, I do look forward to a very good, productive, and collaborative year. It will be a good one. It will be the bridge into the future and the next 50 years, and I'm looking forward to it with working, continuing to work with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Councilmember Irwin.
First, I want to congratulate Mr. Fox. He is one of the most skilled politicians that I have ever met, and probably one of the best council members that the city's ever seen, especially when you look at some of the things that he accomplished over the last few years through his mediation. And it's very fitting that he would serve us in our 50th year. He's a big idea guy, and both he and, now I guess I have to say, Councilmember Bill De La Penia have some great ideas for what we're going to do to really look at the future here. So good luck this year. And Mr. Adam, it's, last year at this time, we had just been through an election, and Mr. Adam and I were both running, and I have to say, I was a little bit like not sure how things were going to work out. Elections can get a little bit heated, and there was a lot of hooting and hollering going on at reorganization last year. But he has been, he and his wife have been just total pleasure. Marilyn and I had lunch really early on, and, you know, what you see is that sometimes you have ideas about people, and they're not true at all. He's really a very fun and fun guy, very passionate about Thousand Oaks, and really got his hands dirty this year figuring out how things work. So I know you're going to do a great job as Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Jackie. You guys have already spoken, but I want to give you the opportunity. Al, any comments? Okay, Joel?
Yes, I would just like to echo some of what's already been said, and it was a year ago that I nominated you as Mayor Pro Tem, because I did believe that as the longest-serving council member, that it was fitting that you be mayor during our year, 50-year celebration. I'm looking forward to all that we have to look forward to, that is planned and not yet planned. I'm absolutely ecstatic that the Amgen Tour is coming back this year, and looking forward to being involved in that. I'm also looking very, very forward to working, doing the city's business, the people's business, and this will be, this will be a campaign year for me I'm coming into. So I'm looking forward and then hopeful that come November, I'll be given another four years. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you, for your comments. With that, that brings us to the close of tonight's agenda. There is a small reception that we'd like to invite everybody to out in the lobby, and with that, we will adjourn to our, oh, it's in the Cavali Theater, I stand corrected, the new and improved Cavali Theater, but there's still a reception. And with that, we will adjourn to our regularly scheduled council meeting for Tuesday, December 17, 2013. Have a great week.